It's time to call the regular meeting of the Horaceville Directors to order at this time. Would you please rise and join me in slowly complating?
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation and my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you please call your own Mrs. Slager? Mrs. Alfred, President. Mr. Hauser?
Here.
Mrs. Cudde?
Here.
Dr. Lockwood?
Here.
Mrs. May?
Here.
Mr. Muller?
Here.
Mr. Muse?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Doctor?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Slager. This is now time for hearing of visitors, part one. Any member of the audience may address the board about any item that's on tonight's agenda. If you wish to address the board about any item on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and act.
Hello, my name is Todd Friskura. I live at 204 Cameron Road in Latrobe. I am a taxpaying citizen who owns a hundred acre dairy farm within the township. I am here on behalf of the proposed, I meant for the proposal of a school calendar for 2014-15 school year. Is there the impression that this school is going to be starting August 21st, which also would be in interference with some of our 4H youth within the county, within the school district? There are approximately 70 youth within the school district that are involved in the 4H program, and they accumulate at the end of the year at the Westmore Fair, which ends August 24th of this year. It will be hard for these people to attend school and also to complete their 4H projects at the end of the year, for this is where they sell their livestock animals, and if they do not complete the 4H year, they do not get credit for the 4H year. And we're just asking for your, I'm looking for a word here, for your ideas on to help us in dealing with our 4H youth within the Greater Latrobe School District. Thank you.
I can address the concern. I spoke with Mr. Friskura this morning. Basically, a school calendar as if being proposed has a start date of August 21st, which he referenced, which is a Thursday. So the students would have school Thursday and Friday, and then obviously the next week would be a full week. And the reason for that is honestly getting a start on the school year and having consistent days of instruction. As you're well aware, we had many days this year for weather delays and cancellations, and as much as we recognize that the state testing doesn't drive everything we do, we know that we want to get as much instruction in as we possibly can prior to that. And if you look across the state, as well as the county, Norwood and Penrathford are actually starting before or the same time as we are proposing for next year. What I explained to Mr. Friskura this morning, and I said that I would certainly make this clear today, is, or tonight, is that any student who is engaged in and needs to be at an event at the fairgrounds, this is, I believe, an educational program, one that obviously benefits our students and our community, and that would certainly be a time that students, as long as the parent took that responsibility, we would make that be an allowable time that the student would need to be in school. But we would need that parent assurance. And I use the example, about a year or so ago, we had school on Martin Luther King Day, and we had a parent who came to the board and expressed concern because he took his child to an event that he felt was a very educational program regarding honoring that particular day. And we, of course, made clear that that was not an absentee, it was certainly an excused time. The other reason, as you're probably aware, when school starts, there are a lot of activities at the beginning of the year that take place that are really orientation in nature. And what I mean by that is, for instance, kindergarten, we do not have a full day of kindergarten for our students until the third day of school. They actually do half-days, and for all of you who've had children go through the program know that. At our high schools and junior high schools, we have orientation assemblies. For each class, we will go through procedures. We explain about lockers and all of those kinds of things. So the goal is that by Monday of that following week, we're ready to go, and we can actually get a full week of instruction in prior to the Labor Day holiday. So I explained that to him this morning, and I know the concern is there, and I assured him that at no time was the school district not aware of, nor very honored by, all of the things that go on at the fair as well as all year, because I know that's the culminating event. There is certainly activity during the whole year. So I just wanted to make clear, and I don't know if I can answer any other questions from the school board members regarding the calendar, but it is on the agenda this evening.
My name is Tim Thomas. I live at 1293 Topper's Road, Greensboro, PA. I'm looking at your agenda here, and it has a resolution for support personnel for football coaches and many coaches, and assistants, and this, and that. This is the rate to be determined? No. This is a school. You know, it's here to learn about school. How much are we spending on this football program? You know, there's one, two, three, four, five assistants in varsity, one, two, three, four assistants in junior varsity. Quite honestly, I don't see the need for all this hoopla over football. I know it's king in this area, but you're taking away educational money, you know. And when you can't even tell us what you're paying, how much do we spend? How much are we paying for the varsity coaches for these programs? You know, there has to be a limit where this stops. I mean, we just built these fields down here for an ungodly amount of money, and now we're going to pay coaches, and we don't know what we're paying them? I would think that if you're going to give somebody a job, that's the first thing they say. I mean, come on, I mean, this is not, how do you make a budget when you don't know what you're paying?
We're not answering. We don't answer questions.
Why not? Why can't you answer questions?
Because this isn't a forum for questions. If you have questions of that nature, you're welcome to call our business manager, or our superintendent, or any board member.
Okay, but this is first I saw this, okay? And the board's going to act on it, and they're going to vote on it, and then it's going to be set, sealed, and signed, okay? I mean, this is the forum for people to talk. If we have a board that won't interact with the public who pay your bills and who pay for your time here, why do we even have to, we let the people come here? I mean, we also might as well go home and just never come back, and you just do what you want, and by the time we find out about it, it's already signed and sealed. If I call the finance director and he tells me, "Well, so be it, it's already done," I mean, that's wrong. That amount of money should be right there on that paper right now. And also, while I'm up here, we'll talk about the field. Is there payments being made on the field today?
Excuse me, there's nothing on the agenda about that, so it's not...
There's no new walking extras that have been coming out lately about that thing?
It's not on tonight's agenda, so we're not going to discuss that now. If you wish to discuss that, you're welcome to talk about that.
Okay, well, that's my opinion on, you don't empower people when you don't know what they're paying to pay.
Thank you for comments. Would anyone else like to address the board this evening?
I'd direct to me, Ridgeview Drive, Latrobe. When will the school calendar end if we're starting early?
We're not, we don't answer questions now, so...
Seriously, I mean...
This is not the forum for answering, getting questions answered.
You're not allowed to talk the last week's meeting. We can come to it and sit and say nothing. I mean, why do you ask? I called Mr. Mears for a tour on the sports facility two weeks ago, still haven't got a phone call back. So what do you know?
Mr. Mears, Mr. Mears, your father is barely home, and he hasn't been calling back.
Well, I'll keep waiting and see if I get that call, but who answers the questions?
You're more than welcome to make a phone call anytime to the superintendent, to the business manager, to any member of the administration, or any member of the board. Our phone numbers are all public, and you're welcome. If you have questions or would like to discuss anything like that, please call us at any time, or call any member of the administrations. Administration, they're more than welcome to answer your questions, and we'll get back to you as soon as possible.
But I like my questions answered on the record, and that's why I'm here for that. I don't think a person's phone call to any of you guys at home is because it's something that's always going to become a he said, she said, and...
Sir, keep your comments to something on the agenda prior to the...
Well, this is, it's about answering my question about when does the school calendar end? That's what this is about, and that's on the agenda. Are we, are we going to stretch the school year out and get more time off in January, February, and March? And are we going to end in the last week of May? I mean, you know, people plan vacations, people plan things, these are questions that, I just can't believe a question that simple can't be answered in public. That is silly.
Thank you for comments. Anyone else wish to address the board this evening? I did forget at the beginning of the meeting to let you know that we did hold an executive session at 6:30 for the purpose of discussing a legal issue. Moving on, I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 159, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held February 18th, and the committee, the whole meeting, held March 11th, as recorded in the copies presented to the board. It's been moved and seconded. We approve the minutes of those meetings. All those in favor, please say aye. Any discussions? All those in favor, then, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously. Solicitors' report, Mr. Naples?
I have a report, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Naples. Legislative report, Dr. Lockwood.
I have a report.
Thank you, Dr. Lockwood. Education and planning, I will move for the adoption of Resolution Number 160 to approve the 2014-2015 school calendar.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We approve the next year's school calendar. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the motion? Yes?
Yes, may I ask if this, if and when that calendar will appear on the school district website?
It will appear tomorrow on the website.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes?
These kids that are in 4H, in what grade are we talking about?
I think they run the gamut from K to 12, so it's 70 students per...
I mean, is it beneficial for them to misorientations? It's something that we, there's a lot of kids that are involved in 4H, I mean...
Well, when you think of 70, 4200 students, you know, we can certainly make accommodations for any students who has...
So they'll have their orientation before or after, or personal...
I'll talk to the principals. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Yes, Mr. Muller?
Yes, you're scheduling three late start days and three half-days before the start starts, don't you think? And I really think we're, you know, we're taking back education opportunities from our students by running the late start anytime, even for weather, much less at work.
I can address that. You'll see a half-day prior to the Thanksgiving vacation on November 26th, and you will also see a half-day prior to the Christmas, the winter holiday on December 19th. Both of those days are day, half-days, because the teachers then do evening conferences for those half-days. For instance, if you look at the calendar and you note on November 10th, from 5:00 to 8:00, the teachers are in conference, that is for that Thanksgiving half-day. The teachers and students are in at least that half-day, and then they make that time up in those evening conferences with parents. There is a similar one in the spring. In fact, we just had that spring conference last week, and that's the Christmas.
I understand, I understand, you're doing things, but we don't have, you know, students in lack. We count that as a full day of education.
The state recognizes that anytime a student is in school for any period of time, it counts as a full day of instruction.
And like three days with, you know, two-hour delays.
Correct. The same thing when we have a weather delay, when we have a two-hour late start because of the weather, that does count as a day of instruction, yes.
I understand that, absolutely. I'm just forcing my thinking. I don't think we should run weather delays, you know. If the weather's that bad, cancel school. And if it's good enough, it's not, that's law, former day, and it is a day.
And I could go back and look, and I have to do this, the number of delays that we had this year because of, obviously, the inclement weather and the cold weather. If we had canceled every one of those days, the state only allows school districts to make up those days until June 30th. So we are going until June 10th this year, so if we, I think we, I'm guessing, Mr. Mears, unfortunately, isn't here, but if we had seven delays, we would be going into the third week in June, which I know also causes some hardships, as well as starting early. So you go either way, you know, it's an issue.
All right, the these partial days, you know, sort of havoc within error, you know, there's bulwark, terrible parents, even late start.
Which is why we do not do early dismissals in the district. There are some districts around, in fact, you might have noticed that Hemphill allowed some early dismissals this year because of weather, and Greater Latrobe has never recognized the ability to do an early dismissal because of that, that reason. We're worried about dismissing students who might be going home, especially the elementary students and not having a parent there. With a late start, most parents in the district are well aware that these weather delays occur and make accommodations ahead of time so that they know we're going to have a delay. This winter, by far, we have had more than we normally have, and so it has stretched everyone's patience thin, in my opinion, including probably administrative staff as far as making those decisions, so, but you're correct.
You know, I guess my point is, I don't want to see half-days, short days.
I understand what you think. I, I think that would have to be collectively a decision of the board, that we didn't want to do any delays, and we were going to make up every day that we had to delay because of cancellation, or because of weather. This year, we have had five snow days, so in addition to those five, we have to add on approximately seven to eight days. It's a difficult thing, how you look at it. I recommend...
It's easy.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, then, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye. Aye.
You're saying aye?
Or both?
You say nay?
Nay.
Okay. Two, uh, would be two opposed. Thank you. I will then move for adoption of resolutions, I'm going to bundle Resolution Number 161 and 162. 161 being permission to apply for act 80 days, that would be Monday, June 9th, and Tuesday, June 10th, June 10th, for the junior high school only. And 162 being the acceptance of a tuition student for balance of the 2013-2014 school year. So moved on Resolutions 161 and 162.
Seven.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolutions 161 and 162. Any questions or comments, discussion, or motion? Mr. Muller?
Again, you're limiting the school days. I think at the minimum, you should separate these two items. They really have no bearing on each other.
Okay, we can do that.
I mean, other than there's plenty of orders, I understand that.
Right. Okay, then we can vote on 161 first, which is the permission to apply for the act 80 days.
Yeah, I mean, you're limiting, what, the two days of education for junior high students, which we discussed, and, you know, you're, you know, putting preference over, working orders over education, and I believe you disagree with that.
My, my comment on that is, those days are at the end of the year, and I'm not saying they're not important, but I would rather have days at the end of the year than have them come back to me and say, "We have to delay school because the project isn't done," because the beginning of the year is much more important than letting the days at the end of the year, in my opinion.
You're saying very little teaching is going on in the last few days.
I, no, I didn't say that. The Keystone exams are over, the PSSAs are over by then, there, there is instruction going on, but the major...
Reviewing exams, I think, is part of education.
Pardon me?
Reviewing exams.
We, we have time to do it. The, the Keystone's and PSSAs aren't gotten back until sometime this summer, so, and we do, you know, I, I know, I do review exams at the end of the year that I get.
I believe we have all summer off as construction is, two days, you know, make a great difference to start school.
Any other?
You have to consider the second or two.
Okay. Do I have a consent as for the two motions? Thank you very much. Any other comments on Resolution Number 161? All those in favor, then, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. That was one vote? Just one? Okay.
Everyone's okay without a call, so...
Okay. Thank you. Then I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 162, the acceptance of the tuition student as listed.
Seven.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 162. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously. The next curriculum committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, May the 20th, at 5:30 PM here in the Center for Student Creativity, and that ends my report, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Alfred for final...
Thank you. I am plowing together Resolution Number 163, the treasurer's report, Number 164, the payment of bills, and Number 165, the budgetary transfer. I move for adoption of those three resolutions.
Seven. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolutions Number 165, 164, and 163. Any questions, discussion, or comments on those three motions? All those in favor, then, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Those pass unanimously.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 166, which is to accept a grant from the McFeely Rogers Foundation in the amount of $4,500 directed to support the district's artistic support classrooms, and I'm very pleased to move for adoption of that resolution.
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 166. Any questions, discussion, or comments? I too am very grateful to the McFeely Rogers Foundation. They do so much for the school district, and if you haven't seen their classrooms, it's amazing, so, our thanks goes out to the McFeely Rogers Foundation. Any other questions or comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 167, to accept the state audit for the 2008-2009 school year, 2009-2010 school year, 2010-2011, and 2011-2012.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 167. Any questions, discussion, or comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? And that passes, that resolution passes unanimously.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 168, which is to have a fund balance transfer, and the key to the resolution is in the second paragraph, whereas the board of school directors for Greater Latrobe School District declares that $482,395 from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, being restricted for capital projects in the capital reserve fund. Move for adoption of that.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 168. Any questions, discussion, or comments on the motion? All those in favor, then, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I'd like to welcome Mr. Bob Armour and Mr. Tom Lynch. They're going to talk to us about bond refinancing this evening.
Thanks, Mr. Armour. Bob from Jenny Montgomery Scott is going to hand out a presentation. As your bond attorney, I compare it to bond resolution or a note resolution, in which FNB, First National Bank of Pennsylvania, is going to buy your Series 2014 note, provide for the current refunding of the authority's '04 notes, and we have scheduled that closing for April 29th. The bonds would be callable April 30th, and as Bob will show you, you have a nice savings. And I'm just going to turn it over to Bob so he can make that presentation, and the resolution really incorporates everything that you would need for the sale and settlement of the note. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, administration. My name is Bob Armour. I'm representing Jenny Montgomery this evening, which is helping to assist the district's refinancing of your 2004 issue. Normally, we would be here talking about bond refinancing, the old type of method, where we would structure the issue and sell bonds to the public or institutions and do the refinancing. However, this lends itself to a different situation, because we have such a short period remaining of four years on this existing debt in the district. We can only call it this year because it had a 10-year call provision, non-call provision, so it's only four years remaining, and it's only $800,000 remaining. So the length and size doesn't lend itself to all the other costs associated with doing a normal, traditional refinancing, including the sale of bonds, and higher legal fees, and printing costs, and official statement costs, et cetera, et cetera. So when we did the analysis, it definitely went to a bank line situation. So that being said, if you turn to the page number one in the upper right-hand corner, I can go through these fairly fast and then entertain any questions, but the first page just demonstrates what we're doing with the money. That your new loan is going to be exactly $832,193, and the proceeds of those, that loan is going to, to the largest extent, pay off the remaining principal and interest owed on the 2004 bond issue, when we call it, from the bondholders on April the 30th, in amounts of $807,000 and some change. Then we have various fees associated with it, the legal fees, filing advertising, Plan Con, DCD, advisory, that's our fee, and trustee redemption fee. So those are the various monies that are going for the $832,000. Page two shows your savings, shows that there is no extension of the debt, there's no increase in payments. So we break it down on a semi-annual and fiscally your basis for you. The second column from the left is your prior debt service. If you did nothing, that's what you would be paying. Third column, refunding debt service, is a new debt service. This would be the new amount you're going to pay. So the savings, gross savings, principal and interest to the school district and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amounts of $65,993, the majority of which will be taken in the 14-15 school year, amounting to $65,000. This is the gross savings to all concerned. Page three, the only number really that matters in this page is the worth doing the refinancing. We've always said the rule of thumb has been 2%. If you can save 2% of your outstanding debt that you're refinancing, that would be great. That would be about $16,000, $17,000. Whether we would have done it for that, I'm not too sure, but at least a 65% of the amount's a 8%. Page four, this is your existing debt today. You're paying presently anywhere from 4.2% to 4.5% on that debt. Page five shows the existing debt service figure. And the important thing to realize on this page, as I mentioned, you, the rule of thumb is 2% of the outstanding principal to pay off. I think this shows, gives more light on, on how much the savings is. If you did nothing on page five, it shows here that you would have remained to be paid on your existing principal... If you did nothing on page five, it shows here that you would have remained to be paid on your existing principal, $129,000 in interest. So if interest rates went to zero, the most you could save would be $129,000. So the rate of interest you're receiving on the loan from the bank is a line for savings of $65,000. So you're saving really $65,000 of a possible 129, which is almost, almost exactly 50% of what you could possibly save. Page six just shows the principal and interest, how it's going to be paid off on April the 30th. And again proves that we need $807,000 and change to pay off the full debt. Page seven shows the new rate from the bank, 1.19% for four years. Page eight shows the new debt service schedule. And then skip over to the last attachment, which runs contrary to the other pages. And the good news and the bad news is, the good news is that for the last 10, 20 years since you borrowed the original mama money to build whatever building is paid for, the Department of Education was giving you 31 cents on every dollar you spent on principal and interest to pay off your debt. So now the time comes to save money, and they want your share back. So you're going to be paying back by just, by mathematics, about 31%. So it shows that the gross savings, I had mentioned Commonwealth and School District, $65,000. The net to the district, when it's all said and done after all cost expenses, is $45,000. Questions or comments? And once we're as fast as we can, it looks like you have a long agenda.
You did a good job as usual, and it was good news.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Lynch. Okay, you have the presentation. The resolutions have been presented in your agenda packet. And so, as I mentioned, it has everything necessary to have the settlement, the sale, and to call in the old debt, and have that savings occur at the end of April. So I'm asking the board to make a motion by roll call vote for resolution number 169.
I move for the adoption of resolution number 169.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 169. Any questions or discussions, comments? Hearing none. We'll need a roll call vote. Mrs. Lajer, please.
Mrs. Eller? Yes. Mr. Houser?
Yes.
Mrs. Cozart?
Yes.
Dr. Lockman?
Yes.
Mr. Almer?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Dr. Zorg?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. That passes unanimously.
Well, thank you very much. I've left certain documents for the president to sign along with Connie to file with Harrisburg, and she has all those documents, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'd like to thank both Mr. Lynch and Mr. Almer for your usual stellar job and your good care of our finances.
Thank you.
Always has to do that. Don't forget, they have to be there. Yeah, you know, man, go to that train. And I'd like to move for adoption of resolution number 170, which is to authorize the retention disposition of municipal records. And they're all listed on the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 170. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously. Property and supply, Mrs. Cozart?
Okay, I'm sorry, will you finish?
Property and supply, Mrs. Cozart?
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. I have no report other than to say that our next department's funding would be deferred 33%.
Thank you.
Oh, and I would you have flipped the page. I also would like to move for adoption of resolution number 171, permission to advertise for security cameras system for the school district. For the January senior.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 171. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Mr. Almer?
Yeah, can you tell us what I mean, at least inside the building and outside? How many cameras, uh, bills?
Actually.
We had doctors, June and I, we had 14 cameras probably a year ago. So June and I, the system and I would have known that actually how many cameras there would be. Well, we got, once we have the, um...
Completely inside then?
There are inside cameras pretty much. The system will be, we will be able to add cameras to what we network base. We'd be able to add side cameras. We can add to other buildings.
You're not planning to do outside cameras, huh?
We want to get the platform replaced. Not necessarily do that. We're thinking inside building at this point. But the capability is there, just a matter of adding cameras.
Mrs. Zorg?
I'd like to say that as a member of the department and choir committee, it's my understanding that this is an effort for us to understand the cost and the investment and all of those kinds of things. And we're not necessarily planning to move forward immediately with any of these beds, but we're looking for some information and some costing out. I see you in these beds.
Like I said, June and I, we are doctors of June and I, so I have a pretty good understanding of June and I based school as it might have been studied.
Also, our understanding there are various camera resolutions you can get, whether you identify space, those are my things. So those are all issues that we have to look at the specifications and see, see what our options will be for.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 171, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Cozart. I will move for adoption of resolution number 172, to approve the 2014, 2015 Westmoreland Intermediate Unit General Operating Budget.
Seven.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We approve resolution number 172. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Okay, we need a roll call vote. And Mrs. Lajer?
Mr. Houser?
Yes.
Mrs. Cozart?
Yes.
Dr. Lockman?
Yes.
Mr. Almer?
Yes.
Mr. Music? Dr. Zorg?
Yes.
Mrs. Eller?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you. And also a reminder that your WIU and election board of directors, you were given a battle last week. Please be sure to return it to Mrs. Lajer as soon as you possibly can. And that ends the WIU report, and now go to EWCTC Joint Operating Committee, back to Mrs. Cozart. Thank you, Mrs. Cozart. Student activities and recreation, Dr. Lockman?
I'd like to remind everybody that our winter sports, our ignition night, will be Wednesday, April 2nd, here in Ottawa, Torrance, 7:00 PM. And I'd also, as chairman of the athletic committee, just like to remind everybody that we do have rules that we have to follow, and they pay the number of coaches we have, by the number of student participation. And that coaches' salaries are set contractually. It is a contract that's already set for salaries. That includes things like coaches' experience, how many years they've coached, how many students, et cetera. So all the numbers are gathered. We may not have the specific, but these to-be-determined amounts are arbitrary or a pool amount of assigned amounts. There is a set contractual formula that is in the teacher's contract. Just prevent it from being aware.
You're indicating that it can only be determined, let's say, now how many players on the team.
Right, then we can plug in all the numbers to the formula that is established by the teacher.
It would generally be similar, not always, but less.
Any relations, Dr. Zorg?
Is it corrected that Trove Gundy Parks Recreation Commission meeting minutes is an attachment? What was corrected?
Um, it was a very small error. Mrs. Benton was reported to be absent, and Mrs. Wilson Wolford was reported to be present, and it was just the opposite. And it wasn't caught anyway.
I'd also like to remind everyone that the Reality Tour meeting is tomorrow, March 19th, at 6:00 PM in the council chamber, with the chairman of this municipal building. Reality Tour is a educational program to teach children about the dangers of drug abuse. And it actually is acting out to different scenarios for the students and their parents. Are also invited to come. In fact, I think it's part of the thing, they have to come with us. So we're looking for volunteers to do certain aspects of the program. Looking for people to volunteer to be in charge of different things. There's going to be muah scenarios, where actually kids are acting to be drug addicts. They're going to be brought to by an ambulance crew. They're going to be taken to the emergency department and treated for drug addiction, counseling with the parents who have lost a child because of drug overdose. So it really is a, almost a drama-type situation. Kids are sometimes arrested and fingerprinted for drugs. Problems are, it's a whole gamut of things. And they're trying to set this up, and the Trove community has been successful, and Greensberg community, Trove is trying to get it started. But it's a commendable thing to get involved with, and we're asking for the community to help. Involved to come down to the municipal building to sign up, see what it's about. You don't have to sign up. Basically, just come down and see what it's about. If you like it, get involved. That's all I have to do.
Thank you, Dr. Zorg. Transportation, Mr. Music? Thank you, Mr. Music. Mr. Palmer is not here, but it does tell you that the technology committee meeting minutes are an attachment. And they're there for you, great. Is there anything else to everyone? No? Work policy, PSV liaison, Mrs. Eller?
Yes, I'd like to call everybody's attention to the bulletin, PSVA bulletin, which probably arrived in all of your homes either yesterday, today, or it will tomorrow. And it's really, I found it very comforting to get everything in printed form that I have holding in my hands. But I'd also like to remind you that on the IL, what we get every day on our computers by email, there was a list of workshops to participate in. And I signed up for this career legal roundup, which is being held at the Westmoreland IU on March 26th. And you all have the same opportunity to do that. And there are other, in training, for the board positions available to you. And I would recommend all of them. I've attended all of them over the years, and I've learned them all a lot. Having said that, I'd like to move for adoption of resolution number 173, which is the final adoption of work policies number 610 and 640.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 173. Any questions or comments on that motion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
And I'd like to move for adoption of resolution number 174, which is the intent to adopt revisions to several board policies. And you will see a whole long list here. And basically, all of these have no change in intent on the part of the board, but they do reflect changes in state laws, which have changed the wording of some of them. And that's what those are all about. And if you will, board members can go to our website, anyone in the public can do that as well. Go to the website and look for the board policy number and read the old policy and see what changes are being proposed. And they aren't very subject to. I move for adoption of that whole long list for first reading.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 174. Any questions or comments? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Eller. Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. Swiger?
I ask the board to move on resolution number 175, which is the professional personnel appointment, substitute teachers, that are listed on your agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 175. Any questions or comments on that resolution? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 176, which is the support personnel appointments that are the coaches and the substitute personal care assistants, secretary, and baseball coaches as listed.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 176. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
I would like to state that coaches are a very integral part of our education process. They have a tremendous impact on the students that they are charging with. Some kids aren't as smart as other kids and don't do as well in school, but they can excel in athletics. And if they're going to be dealing with a coach that has a positive impact on their life, it's a very important job. It's one that we take very seriously. We hire coaches and pay coaches. And we do coaches to work at the school district. So the salaries that we pay them like that much, I mean, in the scheme of things, I guess they could be considered a lot. They have a very important role to fill in our school district and provides lots of our students. So we look at it, I look at it as a very important job and one that's very serious to our education process in the school district.
Thank you, Dr. Zorg. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Under other business, just a reminder for the board members to turn in the state and the financial interests that are due may first. Breakfast of champions is this Thursday morning in the senior high school dining room, faculty dining room, December 30. Student art exhibition is at Sam and Ligonier through April 17th. It's called Artists of the 21st Century. It's a student art exhibition. And everyone is invited to do a free performance next, this Sunday, I should say. Sunday, March 23rd, at St. Vincent Basilica. It is the senior high school classics concert, the women's choir, the chamber choir, the concert choir, the men's ensemble, and the freshman chorus will be performing. So we hope that everybody has some time to come out at 2 o'clock on Sunday. In addition, I would like to read a statement. I'd like to read a statement on behalf of the school board. At the November 2013 board meeting, after many months of discussion, the Greater Latrobe School Board approved a lease with Verizon to install antennas on the senior high school rooftop. Two sets of antennas on sled ballast mounts and one set to be attached to the penthouse facade. Once the board approved the lease, Verizon assumed responsibility for permitting, installation, et cetera. At no time, including now, does the board believe that there are any harmful effects to the students, staff, or community from these antennas. In fact, we believe to some extent that these antennas serve as a community support for emergency personnel and individuals needing cell service, as well as generate a small revenue stream for the district. Verizon singled out the school district more than a year ago with the understanding that public school districts are often approached because of the revenue it generated for the taxpayers. In fact, during the 2011 budget process, where we needed to cut over $2 million in expenses due to decreased state funding, it became even more apparent that public school districts need to seek alternative sources of revenue. In addition, several school districts in Allegheny County and around the state have had cell phone antennas for many years. In the last few weeks, the issue has drawn some attention, implying that an antenna may impair the health and safety of students and staff. Greater Latrobe School Board does not believe that the antennas pose any health or safety risks. However, the district has decided to ask Verizon not to appeal the zoning board's decision, even though it means a loss of annual reupery revenue. Our core mission is to provide superior educational programming to Greater Latrobe students, and we believe we provide this service. The district's intention is not to create or perpetuate any health or safety fears, even though the district believes this fear is not warranted. Therefore, the district will contact Verizon and ask that they not appeal the decision. Therefore, the district will contact Verizon and ask that they not appeal the decision. We will, however, continue to seek alternative sources of revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swiger. It's now time for hearing of visitors, part two. At this time, you may address the board on any issue. I remind you that we limit you to five minutes and it's not a question and answer forum. Please state your name and address.
Rick Fiume again, Richard Drive, Lake River. Uh, thank you for coming to your senses, even though maybe you don't think it's a hazard. I don't think the risk was worth the reward. That money was such a mine nude part of our budget. And, uh, it, it, it just, I'm glad you're doing this. I, I mean, it's, uh, because I was very opposed to this. I, if you guys would all put cell phone tires on the roofs of your houses, then I would look at it differently if you put one on the roof of my daughter's house in school. And they, and I know that was you guys that wanted to put that there because the, the lawyer for Verizon said they wanted it elsewhere and that the nine board members decided to put it on the roof. So, uh, just thank you for making that go away.
Okay, Tim Thomas, I was on the record before. Uh, this issue about cameras. Uh, Mr. Muller, I want you to hear this too, because I'm very seriously thinking. We're putting all these cameras in the building to secure the children? Um, all the schools I go to, which I go to quite a many, because I drive a school bus. All their school, all their cameras are on the outside. We're looking for predators coming into the building. But do we even have a security, uh, department? We're going to put all these cameras in the building, look at all the kids eating lunch and whatever else they do, and we won't put them on the outside? This is ridiculous. We are here to protect these children. We should have them on the outside. We should have gates. We should have a whole security force. If you go to any other school, because everybody's referring to Hemfield and what they do and these do, I don't care what other schools do. I'm here about the children of this district. You know, these cameras need to be on the outside. They need to be where we can see who's coming, you know, lockdown procedures. There should be a whole protocol. Maybe there is, but I don't know about it. Um, also, Mr. Muller, you talked about the two hour delays. I want to pose a question. Um, when there's a two hour delay, does all the staff report early or do they come into two hour time? Because if they come into two hour time, and that's counted as a whole day, we are paying for two hours of instruction to each teacher that they don't teach. So if I don't go to work, I don't get paid for, if I go at 3 o'clock and I lose six hours, I don't get paid for six because I just showed up in, you know, the last two hours of the day. I think that's, that's just, that should be really looked into. Because like he said, you're losing two hours for those children. And by the time they get here, buses run late because of that district, because of the conditions. And, uh, you're losing three day, three hours a day. So I think it should be all or nothing. You know, when I went to school, there was none of this delay. It was either in or out. And if you have to have these, these days that are full days, then you cut out on these vacation times. You know, this is about educating the kids. It isn't about, uh, we're getting less money. I always use the example, I told my kids, when they go to college and a professor calls a class, then I pay, then you are losing money because we pay for that exact amount of instructional time. On the bond issue, um, how much did we pay Merlins or whoever it was to do that fee for us?
$300.
$300, okay. That's all we paid them for that fee? Okay. Now, also, um, I'd like to thank Mrs. Orpens for telling me about how the coaches system works. But quite frankly, I don't care what this statement says. I, this is about education here. Yeah, the sports play rule, but the main majority of these children is about education. And also when we talk about coaches, we brought that man from Jeanette. It's like a revolving door here with these coaches. You know, we aren't the Pittsburgh Steelers and want to win national titles every year. I think that there needs to be a stop to this. We already spent $10 million. We also spent to keep, uh, Memorial Stadium running all the time. You know, there needs to be a stop to that. And you said about, uh, you're going to lose the money. Well, what else is for sale in this district? I mean, this is a school. And this business about trying to get money and selling websites and stuff like that. You're not, you're not here to make money. You're here to educate children. And as far as selling things, that's wrong. And also, you talked about sending a letter to Verizon. Well, you entered into a lease with Verizon. Verizon must have spent $100,000 on the plans of representative to township. They had people there from all different states talking and they prepared studies after studies, not about the effect of radiation, just about the safety on the roof.
Mr. Thomas, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Your time's up. Would you?
I, well, no, no.
Would you mind winding up and you can finish your thought?
Well, wait, if these people were here, they don't know what I'm going to say. And in this five minute rule, I pay you taxes. So therefore, I think I deserve the right to speak.
If you don't mind, Mr. Thomas, for the fairness of everybody, you're five minutes off, but if you would just wind up what you have to say.
Okay, so therefore, therefore, um, are they going to have a retroactive suit against this township because you're canceling the lease?
Thanks.
Would anyone else care to address the?
Uh, yes, Todd Frisk here, on the record. Uh, after the school counter was approved, we were back here counting and we were like, 19 days for Christmas? Seriously? Back here in the corner, you had three educators from different school districts whose children go to this school. You had one from Yawk, one from Hemfield, and one from Mount Pleasant. No time have they had that much time off in their school districts. 19 days over Christmas. And then you want to add two days to begin the year for orientation? Doesn't make sense. And then the school year is probably going to end the same time it is this year. We don't know that because it's not published yet. But we know that it's 19 days over Christmas. If you want full days instructions, get rid of the two hour late starts, built in late starts. Get rid of the in-service days before the tests come out. Do that for a change. Let, let Trobe be a leader in these tests, not a follower of Penn Trafford or Hemfield or Normal. Okay, we are Latrobe, we are leaders in here. And then, you're at the end of this school year. What, what's wrong with taking days off of the Easter vacation? There's no days there. There's in-service days still in there too. My wife's a teacher and not. She lost all her in-service days for the, for the children's instructions. And her in-service days were added to the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you for addressing the board.
Ronald Coombs, uh, 116 St. Cecilia Road, Henty Township. I want to thank the board for what they did, uh, for getting about this Verizon. Uh, I will make one comment, though. I remember years ago that, uh, they were going to put a, a new electric scoreboard out at the football field. And, uh, a couple of different companies wanted to put their logo on there on, and they paid for the thing. Mrs. Elder said, no, Latrobes, that's not their way. We're not asking money. We pay our own money. So maybe that had something to do with it too. I don't know. Thank you very much.
Thank you for addressing the board. Would anyone else care to address the board this evening?
Hi, my name is Lisa Gross. I live at 305 Huffman Road, Latrobe. I wanted to address an issue that I've been having with my daughter over the past few years around busing issues. Um, it's happened a handful of times now that she's been dropped off on the return trip home up to 20 minutes early and dropped off anyway with no parent there to collect her. This only ever happens with substitute bus drivers. Her normal driver is wonderful and consistent. I have contacted the bus company. It's happened last year and this year. Last year, there was, nothing was done about it. This year, I didn't even get a call back. I feel like they don't care about my child's safety, so I'm asking if the school district will step up and control it. I know that the kindergarten kids and I believe the first grade children are not allowed to be dropped off without an adult there. I still feel that my eight-year-old daughter in third grade is still too young to be dropped off at a bus stop with no parent. So either stop allowing them to be dropped off like that or control it from a time standpoint. Like, you should not allow those children to be released from the school if the bus driver shows up 20 minutes early to pick the kids up. If, if they're not within a certain timeframe, allow for that bus number, you don't release the kids. Make them circle back around. That's all. And I know you don't like to answer questions, but how will I know if anything is going to be done about this?
Uh, we'll contact you. That's why we asked for your name and address. Someone will be in touch with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kristy King, 236 Sussex Way, Greensburg. I just want to make an announcement since the next meeting is until April, that the elementary school kids are all going to have the art show. I know Mountain View's April 9th. Very excited and scared at the same time that every child is having a piece of artwork there. It could get really crowded. Um, I don't know, I'm sorry, the principals probably know when, um, Latrobe and Bagley are, but since you're not having meetings until the night that I announced it.
Thank you very much.
My name's Paul Bento from Mount Pleasant, 143 South Sherwood Street.
Okay, I, I need to stop you, sir. We only allow Unity Township or Greater Latrobe School District residents to address the board.
Anybody else? I just want to say, well.
Would anyone else care to address the board's statement? Seeing, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been seconded. We adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Your adjourn. Thank you for trying to save me.